Okay, I'd like to call to order the regular city council meeting of Monday, September 12th, 2011 with a roll call, please.
Mayor Martini?
Here.
City Clerk Patterson here. Council members Ratty?
Here.
Lawson?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
Kerrigan?
Here.
Schmidt?
Here.
City Manager Carey?
Here.
City Attorney Adams?
Here.
There is a quorum.
Okay, if you'd all stand for the invocation, we have Pastor Brad Dyerness of the Sparks Church of the Nazarene. Welcome Pastor.
Thank you. Let's pray together. Our gracious Father, we come to you today because you are our source. We recognize that good men and women in government are there because your hand's involved. And Lord, we thank you for your involvement in our lives today. Lord, we thank you for the men and women who serve us every single day as first responders. We pray you'll bless them today, Father. We think about folks in Carson City who have gone through an enormously difficult time. We pray that you'll be in the midst of all of that as well. And Lord, we ask you for your wisdom as this council discusses and receives input from our community, that you will remind them that they are here as our servants. And Lord, we thank you for their willingness to serve us. Father, we thank you for your generosity to us through this grant and through all the other things that are part of that. Give this council wisdom as they talk about different ward selections and cooperating together with our region. And Lord, we just thank you that you care about what's happening in our community. And we pray especially for those who don't have a place to live tonight. I pray that you'll bless them and be with them, especially as we seek to try to reach out and help them this next Saturday. And Lord, we just thank you for a chance to be a part of something bigger than ourselves. Bless this time together, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you Pastor. Words well spoken, we appreciate it. If you'd all remain standing for the pledge of allegiance. Mr. Lawson, would you lead us, please?
Yes, please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next is comments from the public. Anyone want to speak under comments from the public? I have no speaking cards. Okay, let's move on to approval of the agenda. Anybody want to take anything out of order? If not, looking for a motion. Mr. Smith?
Move to approve.
Mr. Lawson?
Second.
It's been moved by Councilman Smith, seconded by Councilman Lawson, to approve the agendas outlined by staff. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Okay, next is recommendation to approve minutes of the regular meeting of August 22nd, 2011, and the special city council meeting of August 29th, 2011. Any omissions or corrections, deletions? If not, looking for a motion. Mr. Lawson?
Move to approve.
Mr. Schmidt?
Second.
Moved by Councilman Lawson, seconded by Councilman Schmidt, to approve the minutes of August 22nd and August 29th. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passed unanimously. Okay, next we have announcements and presentations. Presentation on the implementation of the Sparks Police Department's Reserve Officer Program.
Good afternoon, Council Mayor. Steve Kiefer for the record. Excited and proud to present a reserve program that we've been working on for quite some time. A little bit of history. We had a reserve program a long time ago, in the late 70s, early 80s, and that carried on until there was a bill change approximately three years ago that required reserve officers to be a Category 1 police officer or have the post certificate, which put them equal to a police officer. During that transition, most of our reserves either resigned or moved on. We held on to one for quite a few years, and in the early 2000s, we disbanded the program. So, we started from scratch. We wrote new general orders for it and really put together a polished program for you. I'll give you a highlight and then answer any questions you may have. The goal of the reserve program is to assist full-time police officers and different type of assignments that may come about during emergency activities or different calls for service that require assistance that's a little bit longer with emergencies or disasters. We will provide professional certified sworn volunteers. They will be under the control of a full-time police officer at all times. And those, really, it's the same standard, the next few slides, regardless whether you're a reserve police officer or a police officer that is paid a salary. What's needed to apply, again, the same as if you were going to be a full-time police officer, 21 years of age, Nevada driver's license, you see the list in front of you. The testing process will be exactly the same as if we were to hire a full-time police officer. Start with an oral interview and then a writing skills exercise, a physical agility, the same psychological evaluation and medical examination, and an extensive background examination, which includes a polygraph. Through this economic downturn, we've probably had approximately 30 Category 1 police officers or Category 1 persons, not police officers, that have a post certificate and have been inquiring about our program, as Sergeant Benedetti has been working on this. So, we have quite a list that we feel that we can tap into. That would be desirable, but it's not mandatory. The Nevada Administrative Code outlines that they must have either a post Category 1 or a reserve academy that we do not have designed. However, we could use the Washoe County Sheriff's Office if we have candidates that we select as reserves that are not post Category 1, if that makes sense. In addition to that, we have three phases of field training, which is very similar to a police officer after they get out of the academy. And the training the reserve will have will be 216 hours on top of the post or the reserve academy before they're appointed into the program. It's a voluntary position, no salary is provided, and we will not provide a uniform allowance at this time. We can revisit it a few years down the road, but we will be furnishing all the equipment with uniforms initially, so we don't see it as a mandatory topic right now. So, the cost, we're setting the goal of bringing on 10 reserves, uniform, equipment, radio. The radio alone is $3,500. So, when you bring up the total cost for 10 reserve officers, it's $58,000. We just received a donation from E.L. Cord that I'll be bringing to you for hopeful approval on the 26th of this month for $15,000 for the reserve program. So, that will lessen that amount. We will be paying for that upfront cost out of a forfeiture account. It's more of a breakdown of yearly cost. After that, initial, $58,000. We anticipate that the annual cost will only be about $14,000 per year for 10 reserves. And I would like to have 20 reserves in a two-year period. If everything goes smooth with this first 10, I would like to duplicate that and have 20 the following year. Right now, it would be too difficult for us to try to bring on 20 reserves with the police training officers that we have, quantity-wise, to bring on that many, so it's not that realistic of a goal to get 20 anyways. And that concludes the presentation. Any questions?
Questions for Chief Kiefer. Mr. Lawson?
Chief, what types of duties do you expect these folks to do?
They will, most often, they will be with a police officer, and they'll be considered, once they reach a certain point in training, a double unit. Many calls for service require two-unit response, so we'll lessen some of the time of other officers by having that double unit status. They really will do the same type of functions as a regular police officer, with some discretion, of course, on different nature of crimes and types of crimes, but for the most part, almost the same.
So, mostly patrol is what you're thinking at this time?
Yes, I'm sorry. Yes. Yeah, it's patrol.
Is that it? Mr. Smith?
Chief, I know years ago that a lot of police officers started out as reserves and then they were hired as regular officers. Are you looking at this, maybe this pool?
I'd love to be in a predicament that we're looking to hire people and we can't find them.
Well, whenever that happens, I mean, this is where you'll probably look first, right?
Absolutely. Years ago, we established two different lists when we had reserves, and I would hope that we would do that again. With the help of human resources, we've established two lists. Without the reserves, having a Category 1 that was very helpful. So, this would complement that in the years to come when we do start hiring, that absolutely you get to, it's a mutual benefit. The reserve officer gets to see if they really want to do this for a living, and they get the hands-on experience, and they get the training to slowly adapt into the world of law enforcement. And at the same time, we see what candidates that can perform exceptionally well.
Sure. Is there a minimum amount of hours that they must dedicate per week, per month, or is it on-call?
It's per month. I don't have that with me, I can't remember, but it's either 10 or 20 hours per month that they have to, absolutely, and attend meetings.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Schmidt?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Chief, I just want to say thank you for you and your staff for doing this work. I know you've been under some tremendous budget problems and reduction of personnel and things, and these are the types of programs that taking a little bit of extra time, a little bit of money to go and get going, is going to pay off in the long run. Two, three years from now, when you have 20 reserves out there, it's going to be helpful, and my hat's off to you. Thank you for bringing it back.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Same here, Chief. Good job, good work. This is a win-win situation, I think.
I think so.
Hopefully, we can meet those expectations with those 20 in two years. I think it'd be wonderful.
Absolutely.
Plus, one of these days, we will hire people again, and there will be a pool of people there to hire, so. Thanks for bringing the program to us, Chief.
Thank you.
Okay, next, let's go to consent items. 5-1 through 5-8. Anybody want to pull a consent item? Okay, if not, looking for a motion. Mr. Schmidt?
Mr. Mayor, I would like to go ahead and have, make a motion. I'd like to pull one item because I'd like to get some information on it, but since we're on the new computer system, got to find out how to get back there.
Which item is it, during a round?
It'd be item 5.7 for Tracy. So, I make a motion to approve item 5.1 through 5.6 and 5.8.
Ms. Ratty?
Second.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilman Schmidt, seconded by Councilwoman Ratty, to approve all consent items except for 5.7. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passed unanimously. Okay, let's go back to 5.7, if I can find it. Come on up, Trace.
You all right?
Yeah.
I want to make sure you could walk down here.
Go ahead, Mr. Schmidt.
Just joining all the wounded people around here, huh? Tracy, just curious about this item. What is it? Where does this thing, you know, this trailer going to be parked at?
That's why I brought Rick.
Give us some information. This is the first I've seen this, so I just was trying to.
Okay.
It's?
Rick Darby.
Why don't you come, Rick, why don't you come up to the other side of the photo here? Don't be afraid.
Sorry, I should just sit there.
Oh, I feel for your balance.
Rick Darby Parks and Recreation. This is a piece of the Whittaker Control Regional Park off of Fourth Street. We're actually going to have a shade structure, and this is an outdoor classroom for the kids. It's being funded out of a grant. It's simulated logs made out of concrete in the classroom, the actual pedestal that this teacher or the speaker will sit on. It looks like a big rock. It's really pretty cool. There should be a picture of it, I believe, in the packet. It's going to go off the Fourth Street side. There's a bridge and over to a shade structure and then this classroom. We're hoping to get the students up there and teach them about mining and open space.
Who's the grant from?
Yes.
Who's the grant from?
I don't have the paperwork.
I know, I don't either.
It's an A.R.A. grant.
This is the other item, sorry.
Mr. Carey?
Mr. Mayor, the grant was received from the State Nevada Division of State Parks, and it is related to a Trails grant, which, as you know, we recently acquired the Whittaker Regional Park from the Bureau of Land Management as a passive park area, and this is one of the grants that we are taking forward to enhance the environment at the park.
Thank you, Sean.
So, the location is off from Fourth Street?
Yes.
That's where I wanted to, where was this thing going to be located at? So, it's off from Fourth Street?
Yeah, there's a little grove of elm and cottonwood trees that'll be placed inside of that.
All right, thank you very much.
Okay, any other questions on 5.7? If not, looking for a motion. Mr. Schmidt?
Motion to approve item is out next time.
Ms. Ratty?
Second.
Moved by Councilman Schmidt, seconded by Councilwoman Ratty, to approve agenda item 5.7. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passed unanimously. Thanks.
Thank you.
Sorry to hear about your back, Rick. Okay, let's move on to general business items. Easy for me to say. Okay, 6.1, consideration and possible approval of the mayor's recommendation of appointment to the Sparks Advisory Committee for the Disabled. Do you have anything on this, Mr. Lawson or Mr. Carey? You can take this?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Carey?
At this time, the mayor has placed before you a recommendation to appoint two members to our committee, Mr. Rahman and Mr. Apag. They were interviewed by a subcommittee of the Advisory Committee for the Disabled, and those recommendations were brought forward to the mayor. Both of these gentlemen, along with the chairman of the Advisory Committee, are present today. If you have any questions, at this time, the mayor recommends that you move forward with these appointments.
Okay, looking for a motion. Mr. Lawson?
I move to approve both appointees to the Sparks Advisory for the Disabled.
Mr. Schmidt?
Second.
Moved by Councilman Lawson, seconded by Councilman Schmidt, to approve the recommendations for appointment to the Sparks Advisory Committee for the Disabled. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passed unanimously.
It's official.
Would either of you like to come down, say a couple of words or anything? Come on down. And while they're coming down here, I want to thank the Advisory Committee for the Disabled for doing the interviews and all that. It really takes a lot of pressure off of me, and I think they started that when Ron Smith was there. And I'll continue it with Ed Lawson. It really takes a lot of heat off of me, Jenny, and I really appreciate you guys doing the recommendations and the approvals, so. Go ahead, just give us your name for the record and say a few words, please.
My name is Henji Apag, and I work for Northern Nevada Center for Independent Living, and I am the independent living specialist over there. I want to say thank you to everybody.
Thank you. Sir?
Good afternoon, gentlemen. I am VK Rahman. I'm a resident of Sparks for the last 12 years. I moved from Alabama 12 years ago. I was there for 16 years, and I have been connected with these challenged children for almost 27 years. So, when I came here, that was my primary focus. I would like to help, and thank you for the opportunity to serve this august committee. And one of these days, I would like to do the invocation in a Hindu way for the council. I am a gospel singer and an Indian classical singer.
Oh, great.
And I would like to entertain you all one of these days. Thank you for the opportunity to.
So, sir, you said you came from Alabama?
I moved from Alabama.
How come you don't have a southern accent?
I changed it myself.
Okay. I want to thank both of you very much for volunteering.
Thank you.
It's people like you that make the city a great place to live in, so thank you very much, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Mr. Lawson.
Yeah, well, we have Judy here. Judy Anderson is the chair of the Disabled Committee for Sparks, and I want to thank her for finding these two gentlemen and getting them through the process. We need good folks like them, and looking forward to working with you guys. Thank you.
Thanks, everybody. Okay, let's move on to 6.2, consideration and possible adoption of Resolution Number 3204, declaring a deed, quit claiming previously dedicated land or right-of-way to the Nevada Department of Transportation. Mr. Erickson?
Thank you, Mayor. Council, for the record, John Erickson. The item before you today is a resolution to fulfill the city's obligation with the Nevada Department of Transportation for the recently completed improvement project on Nugget Avenue. I would be happy to answer any questions anybody might have.
So, tell me, this is the last?
This is it.
Of the thing that we started in 1986?
Yes.
Is that what it is?
Yep.
Who was going to ask that question?
No, there's no more. We'll never see this thing on the agenda again.
Don't ever say never.
Okay. This is the right of way that will not go away.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Okay, any questions? Ms. Ratty?
I don't have any questions, just a motion if you're ready.
Go for it.
I move to adopt Resolution Number 3204, authorizing previously dedicated right-of-way to be quit claimed to the Nevada Department of Transportation.
Do you have a second? Mr. Smith?
Second.
Moved by Councilwoman Ratty, seconded by Councilman Smith, to approve agenda item 6.2. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passed unanimously. One question, John. How's the roundabout working? Any problems? Anybody's complaining?
You know, I drove it during the rib cook-off, and I got into the west parking lot. You know, I don't think a lot of people knew about the roundabout, and I was able to park down there no problem, so it seems to be working fine.
Yeah, I drove it, too. It looks nice. They did a good job.
Yeah, they did a very nice job.
Lance, well, lanced scape, and it really looks like a good, they did a good job. Paid board by NDOT, right?
That's correct.
Okay, for the record. Any other questions for John? Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Never to be heard from again. Okay, let's move on to 6.3, presentation, discussion, and possible action on scope of work for business licenses approved by the Shared Services Elected Officials Subcommittee and requesting the city manager to continue participating in the work plan as outlined. Mr. Driscoll?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of the council, Steve Driscoll, Assistant City Manager, for the record. My capacity here is working as one of the project leads for shared services related to business licensing. Before I start, I'd like to acknowledge members of the team that are here from the city of Reno. You have Alex Woodley, who is the customer and coding services manager, and then also Michael Chomp, who is the business relations manager, and he really manages day-to-day the business licensing function for Reno. And then, from the city of Sparks, Chris Iverson in her customer services role, as well as Lisa Galvin, who is really the person most responsible in Sparks for doing business licensing through the customer services function. So, with that, what I'd really like to do, we've been underway for a while, just give you a quick overview of what we're doing, what the work plan is, and then I'll be prepared to ask and answer any questions. Over the last couple of years, the consolidation, shared services, business efficiency functions have been ongoing. There's been different topics. Year and a half ago, maybe, business licenses and building permits were added to a schedule that included IT purchasing, risk, and HR. Work was done on the business license or the business permit process first, and then when that got quite a ways under the way, they decided to take a look at business licensing. Part of the discussion on business licensing was a complaint that it was too difficult, it was too onerous, there were too many steps, and so we started out kind of with a problem statement and have worked ourselves to a plan. There were 12 objectives that were set up by the Shared Services Elected Officials Subcommittee that's made up of business and elected officials. And what they were looking at, the 12 objectives, were to save money, improve services, try to have a one-stop process if possible, be able to provide interfaces with other groups, trying to develop mutual benefits related to how and why you get a license in different jurisdictions, really being very conscious of life safety and trying to simplify the process and create accountability and certainty. When we took the problem statement that it was too difficult and there were too many steps, what we determined was, a lot of the complaint that we were hearing was not from the regional business licensing, it was really the steps that were needed from a statewide basis to get an identification number through the Secretary of State's office, which requires fictitious names, which comes from the county, requires taxation, several steps, none of them are connected, some are online, some are not. So, what we found is our customers were somewhat frustrated by the time they got to us. So, with that in mind, the first thing that the team did, because they've actually been working together for more than three years, the business license folks, and had developed a single business license application, which we have, in effect, it's a paper process that we've been using for several years. We tweaked it a few times in the last six months, but for all intents and purposes, all the data elements that go from the manual process at the counter into the computer systems that we have that do the background work was already done, it'd already been done jointly with just the people that we're working with that pulling it together. So, the second thing that we did, once our group got together and really started hitting this, is we sat down and created a workflow that showed the steps that we have to get from the state to us, and then the various steps that we have in our individual jurisdictions. And the number-one thing that we found out, besides it was fun to draw pretty colored boxes, was the most important element on a business license, a brand-new business license, is where is the bricks and mortar that housed the business function? Once we determined that that was the most important part, the rest of what we've put together on a business plan became much easier, because the steps that are required to do a new business license based on bricks and mortar defines the process that's involved. All three of the jurisdictions have processes, while they may not be totally alike, they're similar in what they're trying to accomplish. Each jurisdiction maintains its own controls over what is required as by ordinance or by the code that says, if you have a business, what has to be inspected, who has to do it, what has to be involved, and how much it gets charged. So, what we determined was that we have a fairly labor-intensive process. It's paper on the front end, it's driven by where the bricks and mortar are, and then when it all gets done, if you're a service-based company, like a contractor or carpet cleaner or something like that, you then need the right to do business someplace else where you're just going to drive in, provide a service, bill a customer, drive back out. All three of the jurisdictions determined pretty much through our ordinances that as long as the home jurisdiction's already approved it, all we really need is a processing fee, we need your data as to who you are, get it into our system, collect a fee, send you a business license, which is basically a receipt, and now you have the right to do business. So, with that in mind, we put together really a four-step process for business licensing. The first one, we're well underway, and we pretty much will be done by the end of this calendar year. What we're waiting on at this point is the accounting folks to make sure that we have the proper internal controls on cash that the city of Sparks might receive on behalf of Washoe County or Reno, and then how we disperse that money properly with the proper records. The finance divisions from the three entities are working on that. It is not a showstopper. It is a matter of, we already have everything in place, and it's really just, it looks as though it's as simple as collecting the money, being able to send it through a proper channel with a proper receipt. We believe we'll have all of that worked out by the middle of October and work ourselves forward. forward.
We got a question.
Yes, please.
Steve, are we talking about a license that if you go online and buy this, you can do business in Sparks, the city, and the county, or is it still going to be separate, where you have to get a license in both, or Reno or Sparks?
For this initial phase, you will be getting individual licenses per jurisdiction. What we will do is, once you have the license in your home, say it's the bricks and mortar in Sparks, you go through all the inspections, pay all the fees, and are approved by Sparks, then our business license folks will be able to ask the question that says, are you planning on doing, providing services in Reno? If you are, we'll be able to take the processing fee for Reno at our Sparks counter, we'd be able to do the same thing for Washoe County, and then we would process the information and the money to the other two jurisdictions. They would create their receipt, which is the business license, mail it to the customer, and as soon as the customer has it in hand, they can start doing business in that other jurisdiction without having to go to Reno or Washoe County to obtain just that piece.
Well, I know it's some of the functions they put on, maybe you have a business in Sparks, and you go to the automobile museum to do a show, whatever it is you do, and you have to buy the, I think it's a $15 license for the city of Reno for that day or for that weekend, whatever it needs to be. Can we streamline that?
That's what this first phase is attempting to do, is to try to make sure that, once you are a legitimate businessperson, bricks-and-mortar-wise, inside the valley, then how we allow you to do business in other jurisdictions will go. Some of the special shows and special events may not be up to us to do through this process, because it doesn't really go necessarily through long-term business license component, but if you're going to do service on a regular basis, year after year, you will be able to do it from one counter.
Okay.
But it'll be bricks and mortar. Now, if you have bricks and mortar in three locations, all bets are off, you've got to go to three locations.
Okay.
But if you only have it in one place, we believe we have it defined to streamline it.
Okay, thank you.
It's going good from there.
Ms. Ratty.
So my personal experience with the complexity of business licenses when I opened my own business was getting through the application process was a bit challenging, but determining which income streams to apply, to which jurisdictions to then pay your fee on, because the fee was based on revenue, became probably the more complex piece that happened yearly, because it was defining, if you're in the service business, and so my business was consulting work, and if you're facilitating a meeting for an organization that has offices throughout the region, but you happen to be facilitating their retreat today at a Sparks location and the second phase of the retreat at a Reno location, spending the time to try to figure out, who should I be paying fees on for that income source, was where the complexity came, and I'll be honest, I never was able to get much of an answer from any of the jurisdictions about where those fees needed to be paid. So does this process address that follow-up question, so not just the application, but then once you are actually doing business, helping to provide some clarity to which jurisdiction is entitled to the fees?
There's good news and bad news on that question. By the end of Phase Four in 2014, where the goal of the three entities is to have a single license for all, it would be taken care of. Currently, this process will define the upfront kind of fixed fees, if you will, to get started. What you're talking about is typically done at the end of the first cycle, your renewal cycle, and where you now is, when you renew, the first thing you're doing is truing up what your expectations were for the first year and then paying estimates in the forward. The revenue that is collected within a jurisdiction at this point is mostly in our ordinances and our code, so that's kind of the Phase Two of this project, is to really take a hard look at the codes and see if there's a way to streamline that. So for right now, the renewal process will stay as it is. It'll be driven by the jurisdiction with the rules and regulations they currently have in place, which do include the gross revenue component for the type of service that you're talking about. So we haven't been able to solve, we haven't gotten to that problem yet. That'll be the next thing that we'll do, because we attacked starting a business first, because that was the most complex to get going, and then the second phase of Four, we'll be looking at the question that you're bringing forward. So it is going to remain a little bit complex based on our current individual rules for just a bit longer.
Okay.
Mr. Lawson.
Steve, what type of timeframe? It's nice to get a business license in for all three places at one, but what's the timeframe of the issuance on the other? I mean, could I actually go to Reno and Washoe County and get my license faster?
Not necessarily. The way we'll have it set up is that we'll be, if we take money today for another jurisdiction, we will be forwarding information to them. It's basically a receivable, they can then process it without physically receiving the cash, according to the accountants. Normal turnaround on that is two to three days, so it's a day or two to do the paperwork, print it, get it in the mail, and get it off to someone. So the only thing you might be able to improve would be if you wanted to take the time to possibly be able to get it physically handed to you versus it going in the mail. But the day or two of processing upfront will be the same regardless of whether you're at the counter or whether you're working at someone else's counter.
That's my greatest fear, is that we find these licenses going into a nowhere land, and we've got a guy who wants to do business in Sparks, or Reno, or Washoe County, and can't, because we've held the process up.
Steve Driscoll, again, for the record. Mr. Lawson, your points well taken, and the staff members from the three jurisdictions, that was very high on their list, and so they recognize, especially when it's coming from another, where the laborious and the timeframe process of getting the new one is there, so they recognize that it's really, it's an in-and-out, get it in the system, print it, mail it. They're very conscious of that, and we're making a very diligent effort to get that done as quickly as possible. We all believe that it should be, you should physically have your receipt/business license within three to four days of paying the jurisdictions.
Thank you.
Okay, go ahead.
So with that, really wanted to kind of talk about, we just kind of talked about Phase One, and so the deliverables really there is making sure that we can collect the money, that we can get the receipts, we can make it go. The primary issue that we're still going to run into because of the bricks-and-mortar component is getting through the inspections. The number-one thing that trips us up is when someone's trying to put a business in a location where it's not properly zoned. Our zoning folks through the community services will still be in the process, they'll still work that through. If a special use permit's needed, that'll still be there. We're not giving up any of the control mechanisms that you, as a council, require through your ordinances and through your codes. We will get through that as quickly as we can. We're working on making that... Individually, we recognize that those are potential problems, but it's not a licensing problem that's really fulfilling the code and the ordinances for the inspections. Most of those are fairly quick. Fire inspections, environmental control, most of the time, it's not very long to even get through the planning process, it just depends on how stacked up they are at the time. So that gets us through kind of that. We expect to have this process, including the ability to move money back and forth, done by the December timeframe. We have pretty much everything else accomplished at this point. The second piece that we'll be taking a look at is determining how much we can do ourselves online. We're engaging, and matter of fact, we'll have a meeting next week with the Secretary of State's office, because they've let us know that technology-wise, they're trying to do some things to change their portal. We have a concern that they call it a business license, when actually it's only registration, because we run into an awful lot of times where we go to do enforcement with folks that are new, and they say, "Well, I have a state business license," and that's not really what they have. So we're going to be working with, we've already worked with taxation, we're working with the Secretary of State's office. They are trying to do more online, which would help the main complaint that we hear from our customers. And then from ourselves, we're trying to look at how to do online particularly. Sparks does not have an online component to its business licensing model. We've just received some information from the vendor on how to do that. We're analyzing it to decide whether or not the cost-benefit for that goes. Eventually, we have to have it. We have a limited number of staff, and as we increase the number of transactions, being able to do it online will help us meet practical maximums that we have with our staff, and frankly, people can then do it 24/7, and it'll be incumbent upon them, especially on renewals. That will be a huge component for renewals when we get to that point. It will not be as big on the front end, it'll certainly be for online processing. So that'll be the kind of the next step. The third part of the project will be taking a look at all of the code amendments that might be necessary for us to streamline this further and have it truly be a one-stop. One of the first things that we recognize, and the Shared Services Committee recognized this when we gave the presentation, was that we currently have different costs per jurisdiction for the right to do business. So while the inspection costs are different for the bricks and mortar, it's also just for the actual license to do the service component, it's different. We know we're going to run into times where they're going to wonder why this one's 75, that one's 105, and this one's 125. We're going to work with that for a while, and then the third phase of this, which is the middle of next year, we'll take a hard look at what needs to be changed, and then the three elected bodies will have to decide what changes they want to make, if any, and then we'll take it to the next step from there. Once that's done, we really start working with coordination, continued coordination with the state, continued coordination with the other folks in the region, and then the ultimate goal, which is really a 2013, 2014 timeframe, is looking at an ability for us to have a person walk in to one location, and it doesn't matter where it is, it doesn't matter where their bricks and mortar are, that our eventual goal is that they can walk in, start and finish the process, and then be on their way, to where it would be basically a single license that would allow them to do business in all jurisdictions. That's our goal. It's going to take us a lot of work to get to that point, but that's what we're shooting for from that standpoint. So with that, I'm prepared to answer any other questions.
Questions for Steve. Comment, I guess, Steve, more than anything. It's amazing how long such a small transaction as this takes. You know, we all talk about consolidating this and consolidating that, and we're talking about one small, little, tiny piece of business, and it's going to take this long to put all the pieces together, so I think that should be noticed to people that consolidation's not as easy as it sounds.
And if I might, Mr. Mayor, what the team really looked at was, what is going to make it the easiest for the customer the soonest? So Phase One will really change a lot of the process, because it'll be well-defined in each of the jurisdictions. The secondary piece of running to the other two will eliminate that, and so we believe that where we are in economic times, the changes and the additions that we're having, this is going to allow us to get up to speed and really work it through. And then clearly, once we get this first phase done, even though we're projecting to get out to 2014, if the elected bodies want to work quicker, then we'll get down to it. The two big things we're going to have to have some decisions on is changes in our rules and regulations, and then we're going to have to determine how our technology systems can help us. The chances of us going and buying one brand-new system versus the three we have in place will not be very likely, so then it's going to be, how do we transfer data between the two? That seems, at least with the preliminary conversations with the IT folks, to not be overly difficult, but until we get there, we won't know what that really means.
Mr. Schmidt.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Steve, I want to thank you and thank your team from Reno and Washoe County for this stuff. This, sitting on the shared services can be a mind-numbing experience to sit there and listen to reports and things, but I think this is the one item that shared services can sit down and look at and say, "We are moving forward," is very positive, and the reason why the mayor and I wanted to have this thing brought forward is so the council members know what's going on. We have, I think, six or seven registered, six or seven thousand registered businesses in the city of Sparks. We interface with businesses every single day. This is something I think that's going to be positive, it's going to see a benefit right away, as you said, one of your first things you want to do, and we need to make sure that we can take and talk about this item and promote this item, as this is a benefit coming towards, and we can still maintain our identity as City of Sparks, but yet put a deliverable on out there that's going to help the businesses, business community save time. So thank you for everything you guys are doing, appreciate it.
Okay, any further questions?
Mr. Mayor, do you need some action on this? If the councils would like to, we continue working on this process and give the manager that direction.
Okay. Mr. Schmidt.
Okay, I move to direct the city manager to continue participating in the work plan outlined within the scope of work for business license approved by the shared services elected officials.
Do you have a second? Ms. Ratty.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Smith, seconded by Councilwoman Ratty to approve agenda item 6.3 as outlined by staff. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passage unanimously. Thanks, Steve, good job.
Yeah, that's it. I got the kids through working. No, that was mine. Yours I broke about 10 minutes ago.
Let's move on to 6.4, Consideration and Possible Approval of a Professional Design Data Gathering Service Contract to StanTech Consulting, Inc. Rick and Tracy again.
All righty, huh. Rick Darby for the record. Yeah, I came before you today to see if I can get your approval to continue and award this contract to StanTech for a tree inventory, Phase Two of a grant we obtained in 2009 from the Nevada Division of Forestry.
Question, Mr. Kerrigan.
Did StanTech have the original?
No.
Okay, did anybody else bid on this? I didn't see any.
Yes, six, we had six organizations submit RFPs, and StanTech was chosen after a board review.
Was that anywhere in here, that you had that?
Yes.
Okay.
Under the background.
Whereabouts was it?
In the background, it says the bottom, that we had six candidates submitting RFPs, of who they were.
No, I'm just, I couldn't find it on here, so...
Yeah, we had six people apply.
But where is it in our hand?
In the background.
Under background.
Under background, sir.
Under background.
So you click on that? Because I'm not getting...
Yeah.
It says it in the background.
I think we're looking for the chart of who the bidder is for...
That's what I was wondering. He's looking for the list. The list was not included in the...
Yeah, okay, that's what, my point is normally when we have a contract come before us, he always give us the names and the, you know, of the other bidders.
The bids...
And how much their bid was, so we take a look at calls.
Okay, that was not included in the...
I apologize, I didn't do that.
No, that's, yeah, I couldn't find it, so...
I can get that, too.
Yeah, just the next time, if you wouldn't mind.
Do you want it on this one?
Would you like it?
I know it'd be after the fact, but...
Put the list together and get it to everybody.
Well, it's going to be OBE when we vote, so...
Oh.
But next time.
We'll get it in there.
Okay.
Sorry about that.
Mr. Schmidt.
I was just trying to answer Mr. Kerrigan's question there, what he was looking for.
Okay, is that in on the presentation?
I knew what you were...
Yes, I was going to add a question, too, but I...
Any other questions?
Just one.
Go ahead.
This contract is being paid for from a grant.
Yes.
Are a grant, it says?
Are a grant.
Yes.
UFWA. Okay, Mr. Smith.
Okay, I move to award the professional data gathering services contracts to StanTech Consulting Incorporated for professional data gathering services as related to the urban forestry revitalization city of Sparks, grant in the amount of $37,210.
Ms. Ratty.
Second.
Pardon me. Any further questions? Seeing none, please vote. Pass unanimously. Okay, let's move on. No, no, thank you. Let's move on to 6.5, Consideration and Possible Approval of the 21st Century Community Learning Center's Grant, as entered into and secured through collaborative efforts with Lincoln Park, Alice Maxwell, Rob... with Lincoln Park, Alice Maxwell, Robert Mitchell, Agnes Rizley, and Kate Smith Elementary Schools. Welcome.
Hi, I'm Shawna Nelson, Recreation Supervisor. I just want to recommend that we accept this funding for these programs, for the after-school programs at these five schools. We work together with the school district in providing programs. And these schools where we have quite a few kids attend, it's, we provide a lot of good service to a lot of students at these schools.
Question for either one of you, Shawna or Tracy. I don't know that we, have we ever had a grant from the 21st Century Community Leading Learning Centers grant before?
Oh, yes. We started in '03, '04.
Oh, okay, so it's not some.
Agnes Rizley's our longest-standing school site there in the second five-year section. We've come before you each year. We are up to five school sites, and we don't anticipate any others to be going toward this century grant due to the qualifications required. So when we take on these sites, we actually lose the after-school program because the 21st Century takes it over at the school site. However, we're involved in the grant application process because we provide all the enrichment activities while the school district provides all the academic activities that occur after school. So we don't, we do lose the revenue because we don't register the children for these sites, but we get reimbursed for the staff that we're providing each school site.
Okay. Questions, Mr. Kerrigan.
That was going to be my question. I just wanted to get it on the record. Were reimbursed through Washington County School District for this?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, looking for a motion. Ms. Ratty.
Move that the council accept and approve the 21st Century Community Learning Centers grant as entered to and secured through collaborative efforts with Alice Maxwell, Robert Mitchell, Lincoln Park, Agnes Rizley, and Kate Smith Elementary Schools, August 29th, 2011 through March 2nd, 2012.
Do you have a second, Mr. Kerrigan?
Second.
Moved by Councilwoman Ratty, seconded by Councilman Kerrigan to approve Agenda Item 6.5. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. No, no, thank you again. Ms. Ratty has a question or a comment.
I just wanted to point out that the school district gets this money through a federal grant as well, so it's not local money.
Okay, let's move on to 6.6, consideration and possible approval of a grant from the Robert Z. Hawkins Foundation in the amount of $7,000 for the Sparks Parks and Recreation Department to complete the 2011 Teen Discovery Program. Go ahead, ladies.
Shawna Nelson, Recreation Supervisor, I'd like to recommend we accept the $7,000 from the Robert Z. Hawkins Foundation. It will help us, or it will be the sole reason that we are able to provide the Teen Discovery November Session. Teen Discovery's a program that we operate 12 weeks out of the year for teens with disabilities. We coordinate it with the Pacollo School off-track times. We were out of funding for this year and applied for this and got it, so now we're able to offer the November Session. We're really excited.
Great. Questions for Shawna or Tracy? If not, looking for a motion. Ms. Ratty.
I move that the council accept this grant as outlined from the Robert Z. Hawkins Foundation in the amount of $7,000 for the completion of the 2011 Teen Discovery Program.
Mr. Kerrigan. It's been moved by Councilwoman Ratty, seconded by Councilman Kerrigan to approve Agenda Item 6.6. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously.
I just want to thank you for your support. As we've discussed before, this program would not occur without this funding. It hasn't been funded by General Fund for three years now, and staff is now working hard to get funding through December of 2012 to carry this program through the next calendar year. So hopefully, we'll be before you soon with that funding.
Ms. Ratty.
I just want to thank staff again for the extra effort that they put in to make sure that this program stays alive. It's a small number of people that are being served, but it's such an essential and critical service for those families, both from a, their ability to stay employed, just the ability to take a break and have some respite. And without this program, I'm not sure exactly what these families would do, because so many other resources in our community have been cut. So it's a critically important program for a small number of people, and I thank your heroes for keeping it alive.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. Thanks, ladies, appreciate it. Okay, 6.7 is a first reading of Bill Number 2636.
A general ordinance providing for the redistricting of this five city council ward boundaries, lands more specifically depicted on Exhibit A as attached, lands located with the city of Sparks, providing for the amending of the map associated with Section 2.03.060 of the Sparks Municipal Court Ward Boundaries, and providing other matters properly relating thereto.
This is a first reading of Bill Number 2636. The public hearing and second reading of this bill will be conducted at the regular city council meeting on Monday, September 26th, 2011. Anyone have any questions? Okay, no questions. Oops, I'm sorry, Mr. Schmidt.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. One of the questions I have staff today, and I want to put it on the record if we can do it, is just asking staff to give us the census blocks of the Sparks Boulevard area, Vintage Hills on down. They show us where all the blocks are at, and how many are in those blocks? I don't think they have it today, so we're going to get it for us on the next round.
Could I ask you just to make sure that I understand?
Yeah, just Sparks Boulevard, and where all the census blocks along Sparks Boulevard. Your map looks different than my map here, so. That's my only request.
Ed can only see three colors if there's.
Yeah.
That's your only question, right?
That's it, yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
So you'll be prepared for that when we review this? Or you're going to give them the information?
We will have that information available so that, you know, if there's a desire on the part of the city council to make changes on, at the time of the second reading, we can be as prepared as possible.
Okay. All right, let's move on to 6.8, possible motion to conduct a labor relations proceeding. And we're going to do this, right, Shawna, so we can have a motion to go to closed-door session, but we don't need to come back, do we?
No, sir.
Okay. Looking for a motion, Mr. Kerrigan.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make that motion, but I'd like to go ahead and do the comments here first before we secure to the.
No problem. Let's move ahead to comments from the city council and manager. Go ahead, Mike.
Yeah, thanks. Shawna, if you wouldn't mind doing me a favor and having staff take a look at our development services fee resolution, and the reason I'd like them to take a look at is to see if they can be a little bit more flexible. I know it's pretty rigid. That has to do with special use permits and the amount of money we charge. It's come to my attention that there's, you know, if you want to change one or two words, there's a flat fee for that. So we might have them look at maybe doing the same thing they do for handbooks, where you put a deposit down and work off of that deposit, or whatever, whatever.
Okay.
Thank you.
Ms. Ratty.
I had the opportunity on my personal time to travel to our sister city over the past week, and I did want to bring forward the greetings from the town council and the Lord Mayor of Longford, Ireland. They, of course, have been over, some of them have been over to visit us, and I know some of the folks here have been to visit them. They're still raving about the time when our student bands from Sparks High School and Reed High School visited and still are just saying how exemplary the behavior was from those kids, and how two years later, they're still talking about how impressed they were by the young people of Sparks. And so I just wanted to bring greetings from the Lord Mayor and the town council and the people of Longford, and tell you that they still cherish that relationship and want to figure out how perhaps we could use technology to maybe have a little bit more interaction with them on a more consistent way.
So they weren't impressed with the older people of Sparks?
I'm going to just let that one out. They have very fond things to say about everybody that they've ever met from Sparks.
Okay, good. Okay, next we have comments from the public. Anyone in the public want to make a comment? Seeing none, we'll move back to 6.8. Ms. Kerrigan.
I move adjourn, thank you, to our closed session.
Mr. Smith.
Second.
Whoops.
We got a little off track there and didn't collect the person who seconded the motion for the closed-door session or your vote, if you could help me with that.
We haven't.
No, we haven't done that.
We're doing it right now. Just did it now, now you made me forget. Mr. Kerrigan was the first, and Mr. Smith seconded, is that correct?
Yes.
Did you get that, Linda, all right? Okay, we have a motion to adjourn. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously, and seeing no further business, we are adjourned.